Good evening, everybody. This is our Neighborhood Commission meeting. We're at Monday, November 27th, it's 6:00 PM, so we'd like to begin the meeting. I will start by giving the rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise his or her hand, and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are to keep their comments under two minutes. Public testimony taken on each agenda item. Please silence all electronic devices. Let's start by calling the role. If we could.
Yep, Dylan. Bernard.
Yeah, she waved.
I see you. Thank you.
You see me here?
Yes, thank you, Mahia.
Okay.
Ching. Clark.
Here.
Melendez. Oshiro.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Tamamoto. Claire. Could you unmute?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a call in there.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public concerns. Do we have any public concerns this evening? I don't see any hands, but I was asked to... Chair, what was this one?
We do have a Destiny.
I'm sorry?
Apilato.
Thank you.
Can you turn your video on? We can't see you.
Hello.
You have the floor.
Okay.
Destiny.
Aloha, Neighborhood Commission Chair. My name is Destiny Apilato. I am an environmental management graduate student from UH Manoa, and I'm here today to bring attention to a threat to Hawaiian culture, self-sufficiency, and our natural environment that has been causing distress in our community since 2013. That threat is the coconut rhinoceros beetle, or CRB. Its invasive pest has a capacity to wipe out entire groves of new or coconut trees, thereby destroying people's means of livelihood and food. Left unmanaged, they will not stop when all the new is gone. There are reports of CRB attacking endangered lolu species, holla trees, tea leaves, sugarcanes, papayas, and even kalo. Right now, the threat is to what we know as the Tree of Life, and new has a capacity to provide food and water for people, especially in times of a catastrophe. This is a resource we must actively protect in preparation for climate disasters. We cannot let new die unnoticed, because if we do, we'll be too late to have appropriate measures in place when they begin to destroy one of our most nutrient-dense and culturally significant food crops, our kalo. I will not let it get that far, and that is why I'm here today to say that we need to fund research, education, and management of CRB. Since CRB was first introduced through the Hickam base, they have wreaked havoc nearly everywhere west of the Ko'ola mountain range. Currently, current management technologies have been deemed ineffective, have escalated spreads even, and threaten the future of new cultivation. We need to focus on finding real solutions rather than putting Band-Aids on the issue. The New Now Project on the West Oahu says that the most important thing that we can be doing to protect our culture and environment from CRB is to continue to plant new. CRB has yet to invade the Ko'ola Loa and Ko'ola Poko Moku, but with increasingly stronger winds coming due to climate change, we'll see larger flying radiuses of these insects. So it's critical that we get serious about management immediately. The Windward residents must be properly prepared to be part of this battle against CRB. They need to be galvanized into action with the understanding of the severity of the threat. They need to be educated on how to identify CRB attacks accurately and timely. They need to be equipped with the knowledge and resources to prevent further spreads, and they need to be incentivized to plant new. This is a concern that must be addressed proactively, because reactive action will only put our resources and efforts to waste. This is a war on our food crops, and we must act accordingly. Losing our ancestral plants to CRB will dissolve our chances of perpetuating native culture. And new is the Kino Lao of Ku, the Hawaiian god of war and prosperity. New is a puno vay in the sky, offering us abundance, sustenance, and wealth. It is a sacred resource, and it could mean the difference between life or death when disaster strikes. So I plead you to choose life, because I cannot live to see another impact of colonization bring death to my future. Thank you for the opportunity to voice this concern on behalf of my community.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public concerns?
Arthur.
Yeah?
Can you come up to the table here?
We got a mic.
Please identify yourself and share with us what your concern is.
Hi, my name is Sarah Worth, and I'm a member of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. And when I was here last month, my concern was about ethics and receiving a free ticket for a $200 event and trying to get ethical guidance. I don't know if you remember this, but the Ethics Commission said neighborhood boards are not within their purview, so you recommended that I ask the NCO. So I sent actually an extensive email about what happened, and the response I got back was file a complaint. So, like, one sentence. So my concern is, so where do you like?
Response from, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're good.
Executive Secretary of the NCO.
I can respond when you're done.
Okay, that'd be great. So my issue is, like, where do we go for guidance? Especially, you know, there's been issues, and I have to say, I wanted actually to thank this commission, because you do volunteer, and then when we can't get guidance from the resources we're supposed to get guidance from, it's nice to have a secondary resource. So, but however with this one, it's kind of come full circle again, so I still have my question, like, who do I go to for guidance?
And I, first of all, thank you. I think the worst thing to do is file a complaint, and then it sets off a formal process for us to review. It is not something that I would feel comfortable just having a discussion, because if you're looking for guidance, then it should be a dissent written down. So file a complaint. We have a complaint form on the web, and cite the section in the plan that you believe was violated, and you can go from there and attach your summary to it.
So my only option, when I need advice or when I need guidance, is that I file it, and I don't know if there's a violation. I don't know. Actually, I would have liked to attend this event, but I wasn't sure. You said violations take a year for the Sunshine Law, and then for your office to overload it, it would take months, so...
No, that's not what I said. I said...
It would take a long time.
I said, if you go to OIP, it takes a while.
Yeah.
Okay? For our office, I would like to have it in writing, because you're asking for more than, yes, what we think. Right. So fill out the form, submit it with the form, attach it to the forms, so we can look at it from this. Because at some point, I'm gonna have to get a legal opinion. Is this something I could say? Is this an opinion I can take?
Okay, so the issue is that I didn't put it in the proper... The information is wrong here, but I didn't put it in the proper format. If I have a neighborhood plan listed, I have.
Right.
So you just didn't like the... Okay.
You can, that's fine. But just fill out the form. The form is a one-page thing. It says who you are, what date this occurred, and what was the violation of the plan. It cites the section in the plan.
Yeah.
And then that will go from there.
Okay. I think it's, okay, that's... I mean, all the information you just asked for is in this, and I was not told at the form.
Yeah, I said...
No, no.
File a complaint.
You responded, sir, let me finish, please. You responded, because that event was coming up, and you just said file a complaint. It's just interesting that all the information that would have gone on that complaint form is here, but I guess you couldn't move it to the former. But anyways, that's unfortunate that I can't just get verbal guidance. I have to go through a formal process of filing a complaint, and I don't know if it's a violation. I don't want to get anyone in trouble. And so, and then I just have a second thing real fast. I don't want to run out of time. One of the things I'm concerned about is that, you know, Dylan's awesome. He's been great with guidance and help. However, we have issues with getting assistance. And one of the things I'm concerned about is, there's also a... On the NCO staff, there's a public relations specialist. Is that correct? And there's a public relations specialist. So there's two of those.
There's a public relations assistant. That's the position title.
But there's another one that's on community relations. There's another...
Community relations.
Okay. So there's a community relations and a public relations specialist assistant. So there's two people that I thought were going to be promoting neighborhood boards. However, when I looked at Instagram, there was only like two posts every month, and then Facebook did not have a post since the last mayor. So my, and you keep talking about budget cuts, and I'm just wondering what these other two staffers are doing or... So anyways, that was it.
Do you want to respond to that? No? No, sorry.
Okay.
If we could go back to the original discussion regarding the ethical violation, or you believe?
I don't know.
Well, the point is, if I tell you what I think,
Yeah.
will that be used to guide you in your decisions?
Yes, because I'm a legal expert.
Yes, in that case, I need to be sure that's a legal opinion that's correct, as opposed to my own. Okay? So that's why I would like that, because at that point, we will draft something, but the legal team has to, the legal attorneys have to review it, because you're gonna use that in your discussions with your board members on how you proceed. And you can actually use our opinion in your filing with whoever. But I think the interesting thing, and this is the part that we get into that... And that's the reason why I don't want to just have a conversation. Ethics said that's not their deal. They're not gonna cover it, because they don't have jurisdiction over the neighborhood board, which is very interesting, that the ethics department in the city feels they don't have jurisdiction over that. And if that's the case, then maybe there is no ethical violation, because there's nothing to violate, because the ethics guy said they don't have jurisdiction over. So it becomes a fairly complicated issue from my perspective on how do I reply to you that you can actually use it as a guideline. So that's why I would like that form filled out. And, you know, specify who violated it, when it violated, and what you believe the violation was, and relate it to the neighborhood plan, because that's the key. You have to say, they violated the neighborhood plan here. Now, if you deal outside of that, and you want to deal strictly as an ethical violation, then we don't decide that. Ethics decides that. And that's why I said, if you're going to go that way, talk to ethics. But...
I'm just, I'm so sorry. I just am really surprised. I've never worked for an organization or volunteered for an organization where neighborhood commission is created just to support, just to guide neighborhood boards. That's the only reason it was created.
And...
However, so, sorry, sir. However, what I don't understand, I've never had a manager or someone in a position of authority who's supposed to be the authority on this subject matter tell me, I can't give you any guidance, I can't give you an opinion, I can't... You have to fill out a formal complaint, even though you're just asking, I don't know, is there?
Because...
That's fine, but I'm just surprised, sir.
Yes, and I think part of the challenge is much of our plan says, follow the state law or the city law. Much of our plan says that, okay? So if that's the case, and we say, okay, then if it's an ethics violation, go to ethics. And then you go into ethics, and they say that's not their deal. Well, that presents us with a little bit of a challenge. Just one quick question. Lloyd refers to ethics, but there are, there's a state ethics commission, and there's a city ethics, right? So which one did you?
I went to city. Actually, I went to state first, and they sent me to city.
Okay, I just wanted, you just went to the ethics.
Yeah, sorry.
So, okay, I just want to make clear that you did go to both. Okay, so then you're covered in terms of, you know, because the state obviously governs, you know, state statutes, and the city ethics will cover all of the city.
Yeah.
Maybe...
You know, my view is that it's unrealistic to expect to get a proactive, you know, advice in this regard, because it's not typical that the government gives you proactively telling you what to do. You need to decide that on your own, or how to behave, you know, how to conduct your own activity. And if there's a problem, yes, they can come in afterwards and say, you've made a mistake. But there's also a safe harbor part of this, too, in a sense. It's not strictly a safe harbor legally speaking, but it's sort of in the sense that if you ask multiple people and you get the opinion that there doesn't seem to be a significant issue here, then you're reasonably well-protected against any negative repercussions from that behavior.
So who are the people you recommend talking to?
Well, you have to get your own attorney, quite honestly. Well, I mean, that's how life is. If you want to go to the IRS, they're not gonna just proactively tell you something, or the Attorney General.
So based on what you've learned so far, where are you? Would you go or not go?
Um, I have kind of...
Then it's a personal decision.
No, I mean, some of these things about, like, whether or not it's considered bribery or whether or not, even with procedurally, things to do with neighborhood board meetings, I mean, I don't know. I'm learning. So Dylan's been great, like, oh, you can't do that, or, you know, the people said, hey, you need to wait for this, or it's good to get guidance. And I can't imagine I'd have to, like... It's interesting, because this actually, that happens every year, and they've been getting it for years. I guess I will, I don't know if it's a formal complaint, but I guess that's my only... Yeah, okay. But, and then I guess you don't want to answer the second question, so...
Second question is, sorry.
What would they do, like, the PR?
Oh. Yeah. We have, well, I... Social media platforms that we use.
Well, just, yeah, maybe to answer the Instagram, not only are there posts, the posts are the permanent ones that stay on the page, but if you're familiar with Instagram, we also have stories. And stories are what you can post for a 24-hour period. And what we do is, and that's what this person does in their job, they're strictly, yeah, like, the social media and everything, not just that, but posting on our website. So a story would be, what meetings are tonight? There's definitely gonna be something out there right now that says, commission meeting is tonight, and then the Waikiki meeting actually got rescheduled, so their meeting is gonna be tonight as well. They're upstairs. So there's stuff like that. We also had the parades on Friday and Saturday and community events. And then when other people that might be elected officials or just presidents want to share things and tag us, then we repost those and share those. So it's not just the permanent, there's the temporary things that are constantly going on. So that's the social media. I can't speak to the Facebook right now. I'm not involved in this. I just know that we have people on our offices addressing the things you just brought up.
Because I didn't think you could do reposts as stories. I'm interested. Okay.
Yeah.
I think, you know, part of our challenge has been a couple, twofold. One is, you know, even on Facebook, we did not create the account, so we had challenges just getting control over it. And that was a challenge that's kind of ongoing right now. The other thing that I think would be good to understand is that a lot of the stuff that we do is related to our own website. And the second PR position actually works with, like, your neighborhood board will have a question on what's happening with this, or we don't like this, or can you give us more information? The second person actually does a lot of that. They do what they call a dart system. I think what is important to understand is that in government, you're very structured in terms of positions. You cannot just create a position. This is the position you have. So if you got five positions, and these are the titles, that's what you get. Whether that person does that job is not maybe or maybe not, but you cannot...
Yeah, that's...
Create. It's just, you live in the block that was built for you, basically.
Are you mansplaining what's happening?
Well, but the point is that, the point is that we would like to restructure all of our, the way, what we do. And I would love to do that, except it will take a couple of years to do that, because you have to redefine positions, and there is an entire process for that. So we may do it the positions we got. The biggest thing we have right now, what I would like to do is make sure that any questions that the board has, that we are able to turn that around quickly, that we can go back to the department. So one person does that. Actually, I have two people working on that. The other person basically handles everything on the website. Excellent. Very good. I think we're gonna move on. I see other hands.
Excuse me, that's one of the commissioners.
Yeah, I see. Oh, yeah, it's him. Mahia, you have the floor.
Aloha, Chair. Regarding social media, I would just like to say on behalf of the NCO, I happen to be on their Instagram page now. They have 669 posts, 1,440 followers, and the recent post was October 31st. So it is quite active on the Instagram account. Thank you.
Okay. I see Mr. Lysen.
We have another question.
Okay. I see Mr. Lysen. His hand has been up. Go ahead, Mr. Lysen. You're on.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just following back with Ms. Worth's question. Would the Neighborhood Commission respond favorably if she was to submit a written request as per neighborhood plan sections 2-11-103, request for information, 104, request for information about a ruling, 108, request for information from corporate counsel, or 2-11-401, a request for information about a statement or ruling by the commission itself? I just, I have to believe there must be some way other than filing a complaint for her to get answers to the questions that she's seeking. Thank you.
Thank you. You had your hand up. Can you identify yourself and tell us what your concern is?
To be brief, so you can move the meeting along. My name is Greg Masakian. I'm the...
Greg, what?
Greg Masakian. Yeah, the legal name is Gregory, so that's the way I'm listed under the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I'm the Sub District Two Vice Chair of Waikiki Neighborhood Board. And I've been on since January. Just regarding what Ms. Worth said also, my fellow board member and the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Just for clarification, and this gentleman said it, I was gonna ask what your legal counsel is. Is it part of... I'm assuming it's not part of the commission. It's a separate...
No, it's the corporate counsel.
Corporation counsel, okay. So you're utilizing corporation counsel for any legal opinions. Do you also work with OIP for legal opinions in parallel with corporation counsel? Or just corporation counsel?
Um, work is not quite the accurate description. We will ask them. We will ask them. And we will actually refer people to them, but we will, we don't necessarily work on an opinion with them.
Okay.
In fact, I have asked for them, but they have told me it would be a year before they would get to it.
Okay, and then just a couple of questions. Would you also go to the City and County Ethics Commission to ask for an opinion? Like, in this case, for this...
No, we're gonna, no, we don't do that. We, it would... If we get it, we'll look at it from the standpoint of the commission and the neighborhood plan, and then we would work with, if anybody, with the corp counsel.
Okay. I just want to say, I do share Ms. Worth's concerns regarding this particular event. We all had an envelope on our table at one of our board meetings, which was an invitation to this event. It didn't identify that it was a $200 per person outside of, you know, our invitation if you go to participate as an outsider. I did participate in the event, because I was too curious to not. I made sure I wasn't gonna accept alcohol or anything. They had some limited food there. And it was a little different than I was expecting, but I did participate just as an observer. We did have some Waikiki Neighborhood Board members there, and I did reach out to OIP, and I had the concern also, because to me, it's a simple question. There's a certain amount of, you know, what you could accept as a gift in any public, you know, agency department, there's certain rules and regulations. And for us, I feel there should be a clear denominator, something, some information regarding what you can accept or not accept. And I thought this was not too much of a gray area. I thought it was pretty black and white, but maybe not. So I felt like we should be able to get an opinion. I did get a verbal opinion, a short version. It does take about a year to get a written opinion from OIP. That's what I was given as a timeline. And I'm not gonna go that route. So I got an informal opinion, but they also said to go to the Ethics Commission. I didn't call Ethics. I just, at that point, I decided I'm gonna attend and see what it's about, and then I'll deal with it later.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I think it's Ethics, not OIP. The question should be to Ethics, not OIP. OIP is the Information Office. They deal with public information, what's available, what's not available, what you can request.
Yeah, I mean, for Sunshine Law, but they did give some kind of an opinion, a good thought, you know, the attorney there that I spoke with. So in any event, just to move on, so I want to keep your meeting from going forward. I wasn't planning to come tonight, so I didn't have anything prepared, but I do want to say that I do have concerns with other things I've shared with Lloyd, and as far as NA is going forward, I hope the neighborhood assistants are looking more towards the rules, the policies, what's in the neighborhood plan, and really supporting the board members as opposed to just supporting maybe the chair or some, you know, certain agenda. I've seen some of those issues and concerns I do want to share with the folk commission this evening. I'll bring that to the table at a future meeting. I'm not prepared to do that this evening, but you know that I've shared some of those concerns. So we appreciate Dylan. We've had him for one of our board meetings, and I hope that we have more Dylans in the neighborhood assistants, and you guys hire some more people. So, thank you.
We would like to. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, thank you for being on the board. I don't see any more hands on the public concerns, but I was asked through Lloyd to read this response from Kathleen Paughidoi, the chairman of the North Shore Neighborhood Board Number 27. And she wrote, "Aloha, Chair and Commissioners. At the recent Survey Committee meeting, you stated that the North Shore Neighborhood Board 27 needs more time for its meeting. I wish to assure the Commissioners that this is not true. I'm not sure where this statement came from, as no one on our board has asked for more time for the meetings. In fact, the one time I tried to extend the meeting by 30 minutes, starting at 6:30 PM instead of 7:00, the motion failed. In fact, I don't think we even had a motion. The board was not interested, not interested. Our meetings run two and a half hours, and we managed to get the important items of business done. If you ever have a question regarding a board, how it is run, et cetera, please do not hesitate to call me or Vice Chair Achiu. Better to hear from us directly." That's it. Thank you. Um... Seeing no further hands from the commissioners or the public, I'm gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes, as everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Is there any discussion from commissioners or anybody from the public? Okay, seeing no hands, we have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. It's been moved and accepted. Any objections? If not, the motion is approved, so the minutes are approved as circulated. Next item on the agenda, Executive Secretaries' report, Lloyd. Thank you, Chair. October 30th, Monday, we had a conference of chairs. It was attended by approximately 31 people, although that is the count as of the RSVPs during the meeting itself. We had probably a little bit more. We had about 20 people in person and 11 people online. The number of items were covered. Just go over this real quickly. The first thing we covered was the role of the NCO. And part of it was the history in terms of people regarding our advice from my neighborhood assistants in terms of Sunshine Law and Robert's rules. But I just wanted to make it very clear after talking to our legal counsel that we do not provide legal advice. We will have input at times, but we do not provide legal advice. As far as Robert's rules, we also provide input, but we are not parliamentarians. So at the end of the day, it is the neighborhood board's decision on whatever they want, whichever way they want to proceed. Second thing I covered was the minute taking, and I just wanted to reiterate that the board itself is responsible for the minutes, and that's a legal responsibility. We will provide a draft that is compliant with the law, and at that point, the board may choose to adjust it in whatever way they choose. We also had an issue with special meetings, and I just wanted to reiterate with the boards that special meetings are fine, but it is not something that we cover in terms of support. We will provide a projector and screen and also a WebEx platform, but as far as everything else, the minutes, the opening, the closing of the meeting site or securing the site, is really up to that, with the committees that are having these special meetings. So just want to make sure. And part of it is, it's just a practical perspective, special meetings and committee meetings. We have 33 boards. That means 33 meetings a month. If each board, and some boards have five, six, seven subcommittees. If every board just had three, that's 99 additional meetings a month. Add it to the 33, then we got 130 meetings a month that is impossible for us to cover. I mean, it's just physically impossible. Right now, my guys are stretched in with seven boards. They cover seven meetings a month. So, and I think the boards understand that. They understand that we cannot do everything for them. Also, I wanted to, what I did talk about at the Conference of Chairs, and I think this is important for our perspective going forward, I really believe that the concerns that the boards have... the mayor's concerns, the questions that we get back from the boards are the most important things. It's the community asking. That's the way we look at it. And I, and I want, and I told my staff, we're gonna build ourselves around that. I want to be able to get those questions and get the answers back as quickly as possible. That's, that's the objective. I think we can be effective, and the boards can be effective if the community knows if they got a question, they can get an answer at the boards. So I just let the commission know that our priority is going to be to be able to turn those questions around, so. Uh, we also did talk about a Google Drive, and right now, we've pretty much set it up for all the boards. They, the boards have been asking about it for a while, and I remember talking to Larry, talking to you two years ago, at least maybe three years ago, about making sure the information that the boards have, whether it's a draft resolution or a final or any other information is available to the public. Um, we have my, and a Google Drive for everyone, and everyone seems to be using it well. Uh, I, I think everyone likes it. There's a ton of information up there, and I think that's part of what we do in terms of trying to be transparent. So if a, if a representative has a, a newsletter or a letter or information that it goes out there, anything that the, that the boards wanna put up, they have full access. They can, they can load up whatever they want. And I, and I think for us, it's been great. We, we've, we think it's going to be something that everybody can use after a while for everything that they have on the board level that they wanna post. So the information is always there. Uh, covered up a couple of other things. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to cover, and this is something that comes up every now and then, and, and it's about the board budget. And, and I wanted to explain to in the past, the boards had a budget, but the budget had like three things in it, and one of them was the cost of your meeting space. The second one was the cost of the video production, and the third one was the cost of your mailings. Well, all three of those things we have to pay, we will pay for anyway. So there's no sense needing a budget. We're just gonna pay for it. Um, I remember when I first got here, one of the things that I was, I was asked um, within the first few months was the, one board passed a resolution asking, requesting that the NCO provide an additional fifty dollars to do their mailing because they had run out of postage money. And I thought that was the most crazy thing in the world. It's like, of course, we're gonna get, we have, by law, we have to mail some things, like the agendas and the mailing. We have to mail it. So, um, I just took it off the board. I said, don't ask me again. We will just mail it. Whatever it's, we will, we will mail it. Um, as far as OLELO or, um, the video reproduction, we, once we sign a contract, we're in, we're gonna, we're gonna pay for it. You don't need to worry about it. So there really is no budget that you have to work on. At the same time, we did, I did provide for the neighborhood boards a thousand dollars for outreach, and that was the result of federal funds that we got. Uh, and it's been about a year, and we've spent very little of it, which is interesting. And I told the boards, if you don't use it, that's fine, because I can use it. I mean, we, we, we need to shore up some of our holes right now. Um, but if, if you do have something you wanna use it for, let me know. Just ask me. Just ask. You don't have to do anything special. Just bring it up in your meetings, decide as a, as a group, and just ask. And one of the things we've done is, uh, some of the boards have participated in parades. Uh, especially at this time of year, there's a lot of Christmas parades. Um, a year ago, Kamaki did a, did a Christmas parade, and, and we helped pay for the entrance fee, which is minimal. But we also will be there if if you are participating in a parade, great. Um, we have banners for you. We can, you can take a banner if you got uh, an entrance fee for the parade, let us know. Um, we'll cover that. So I am hopeful that the boards will use it. In fact, one of the boards are participating in the Christmas tree event in Kapole, so we helped them with that. Uh, but, but the point is that that's really the only budget you can work on right now, and that is coming, and I told them, listen, you guys gotta tell me in the next thirty days, because you had this opportunity for a year. And some, some boards took advantage, some boards didn't. Um, I think Waikiki, and we, actually, we're trying to Waikiki, um, participated in the ganky ball. You know, throwing it into the, and there was a fee to it, but we just have not been able to get anything from the ganky ball people. They, they actually did it. Well, we're trying to figure out what, how much do we need to pay to get, to pay for the event. But anyway, the point is that, um, as far as the boards are concerned with their budget, they really don't have a budget, um, because everything we will pay for anyway. So my perspective right now is worry about what's going on in your community and talk to us about your community. I mean, that's, that's what the boards are there for, so.
So I take it more of the budget. If, if you have any concerns with the budget, then you bring it up
Yeah, just
with the commission.
Yeah, no, they, no. If I have concerns
Yeah.
No, cuz I
If you don't have enough funds or you need more funds.
Yeah, then, then, well, if we need more funds, you know, we're in the middle of the, of the year right now, so we're already preparing for next fiscal year. So we're gonna be looking at, at how we can ask for more money coming up in the next fiscal year, but it's, it's, and I, and I told the boards, and I, and this is just an FYI. Um, I think we should all understand that money is going to be, I think, very tight. Um, it's just, it's just the way everything is going on today. Um, we had a ton of money come in from the feds during the COVID time. I mean, like hundreds of million dollars. And what's happening now is that that stopped. So, you know, we, we don't have that. Uh, we have a number of things that will probably impact our revenue in terms of the city in terms of property tax, cuz that's basically where we get our, our, our revenue from. Talk about, so. Um, I, you know, we're tightening our belt. Everybody's tightening their belt. Everybody's assuming it's gonna be a tough year, so we're gonna go from there. But we work internally with our budget, and then we work with the Managing Director's Office, and then it's proposed to the city council, so. Um, the, the budget for our perspective, we work with Managing Director's Office, cuz we come under there. But it's not something that this commission has to decide.
Great, thank you. I see one hand up still. Uh, Mr. Lysat, did you have your hand up? Or question? Comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. If I may, just redirect to the Executive Secretary. Could you clarify, sir, was the, is there a deadline by which the individual boards would need to extend the thousand dollar allocation uh, before it might be reclaimed?
Well, the reg, well, yes, there is. And what I told the, uh, chairs in October was, you need to decide in, in the next month. Now, I, I realized that that didn't give them a lot of time, but they also had a year to decide. Um, and, and I'll be frank with you, Kevin. I am really interested in the board doing stuff. So while I say you got thirty days, if you come, if you have something in January, then fine, just, just ask. We'll figure out a way we can support you guys. But I, I just didn't want it to be a forever thing. And people, the other question that was interest, not interesting, but people should understand is that they were asking if this is a recurring thousand dollars, and it's not. It's a one-time deal. And, and that is just what, let me explain how this all happened, um, just FYI. We were allocated from the city council X amount of dollars, um, for public, for outreach, for, for community's outreach. Uh, instead of NCO taking a lead and spending that money, from our perspective, that's when I turned around and said, you know what? Let's ask the boards. I wanna ask the board. What do you think you could do? Um, and that, it changed at that point to, we're gonna ask the boards what they think. The problem with the federal money is that by middle of next year, it's going to be either, you know, like, as you know, the, whenever you get money from the feds, they give it to you, and then at some point, they take it back if you don't use it. And how, and there's a special word they use. They use claw. They claw it back. And that's a, that's, that's a government terminology, but, um, again, I told them thirty days, so it should be by the end of the year, I should know, but you know, if you got something, if you, if there's an event that happens in March, let us know, and let's see how we can help. You know, it's not a, it's not a closed deal forever.
Thank you. I guess I, I may misphrase my question. It was more of a, a bookkeeping question. Our, our board, for example, has determined two projects to execute, but do they need to be, do the expenditures need to happen on the record before, say, at the end of
No, no.
of next year?
Everything on record for their board, and we're in the process.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it, it, there's no, it, it's very flexible. It's not a deadline that needs to be on the books. Um, just let it, just keep it there for, just let us know what you guys, what you guys wanna do, and let's see how the best way for us to pursue, so. Um,
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I see one more hand? Larry, you have your hand up?
Yes, I, I just wanted to add a couple of comments for feedback, Chair Oshiro. Uh, what Lloyd's staff has done there, I totally support, uh, especially when you take a look at the mailouts and what we, our treasure responsibilities we had before, uh, pulling our treasure out of all that saved a lot of time and effort. It allows them to effectively and efficiently manage their books, especially with working OLELO, the mailouts. And, uh, and then the other area was, uh, uh, with the thousand dollars that we had for each board, I think it was a really smart move to go out and, and purchase bulk shirts, polo shirts for all the board members. That is worth its weight in gold, because when our board members are wearing that shirt in public or wearing it in a meeting, or we're strategically placing ourselves at the entrance of Don Quixote so we can, uh, bring in, bring in more people to our board meetings, uh, those, those shirts are gonna pay off. And I just recently took the shirts, and I'm adding Pearl City to them for the, uh, uh, for the embroidery, uh, to make turn of that. But anyways, uh, all three of those items that you talked about, Lloyd, definitely support. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody had chats. In person.
Hi, Sarah Worth from the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Um, since we're on the topic of shirts, um, this is the polo shirt. You can see her here, um, with the embroider. So when I work for organizations, uh, where there is embroidery like this, which is identifying them as, um, or similar to, um, employees or so forth, they, um, usually don't like to do this sort of thing. I mean, because if a person's kicked off of the board, you don't ask for the shirt back. They're still walking around looking like they represent the board. There's no, uh, time, like, ending. There's no way of delineating when it ends. So that's one of my concerns. And also, last meeting, we talked about how the budget was so tight that, um, you're concerned about cutting WebEx out because the rates were tripling.
No, we don't, we don't even pay for WebEx. It's free.
So, okay, I'll look at my notes, but I thought there was some concern about the budget and not the, so, um, because you're saying that the videographers
Yes.
were
Yes, I can explain. Yeah, it, WebEx is a, is a program that the city has, and we use it for free. The videographer is a, is a contract we have. And that comes up for bid. In fact, it's up for bid now. That's gonna cost us more money. And simply because the original contract started in pre-COVID. And because of COVID and because of hybrid meetings and because of virtual meetings, the, the job description has changed and the skill level has changed. So the cost for the videotaping is going to go up. We just know.
Yeah, so is it you can't spend money
Okay, is that, sorry?
There's categories. This is talking about, we're spending money on shirts, but we don't have money for the videotaping anymore.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That, yeah, well, the videotaping is a separate contract, so, um, we will supplement that, but we're gonna, if we supplement that, we may have to take it from other places.
I'm just concerned, like, you're saying, funds are funds, and, um, before, I think, uh, I heard that the boards actually used to kinda handle the, uh, money and transactions. And so our budget's just a thousand dollars from the feds. And, um, I think we started planning it then, but it was very, um, it was not within the federal guidelines. Be great if we could get like some more like guidelines
There's no federal guidelines for
I suppose we'd use for public outreach. That was one of the
It's public outreach, and they do not define categorically what that means. So public outreach can be anything from t-shirts. It can be, uh, parades that you participate in. It can be printing flyers when you go down to the mall, uh, a number of things, but it's not necessarily defined.
So I was wondering if I could maybe make a request or just a suggestion to think about, uh, because some of the boards, we, we only meet once a month. We are covering a lot of topics and stuff like sunshine laws. I don't know, it gets a little tricky and difficult. Um, so if they come, we get close to the deadline, cuz I, this is the first I'm hearing about. There's a deadline about, or you know, even a soft deadline. It's the first I'm hearing of it. Is there any way that the NCO could perhaps like help them like schedule a event or help, like, here's what we've done in the past. Would you like to do this? Is there any way we could get that sort of help?
No.
Maybe from the, the PR specialist or the assistant?
No, no, no. And I'll tell you why. When we first did that, when we first went out, when I first thought about it, say, let's ask the boards, I did not provide any guidelines in terms of what that meant. It's public outreach, okay? And there was a specific reason I did not. And the reason is, if I went to you and say, these are the five things you can spend it to, or I would get hung. Because the first thing everyone would say is, how dare you come into our community and tell me, tell us how to spend this money? So I left it up to the boards, and I, what I wanted to do was have the boards think about it, because you know your commu, community better than I do. You know the best way to touch and reach your community better than I do. So I said, it's outreach, it's very general, and we've had everything from parades to kinky balls to
So maybe I, I'm so sorry, sir. Maybe I did not feed the question right. Um, so if we come to the NCO for guidance, like, we know we have to, you know, you know, could we get advice? Could you help us like coordinate, organize it, that sort of support?
We definitely don't organize
Yeah, no.
Boards that know this doesn't fall under
Yes.
because of certain concerns.
Right.
So, okay, so we get, what kind of help could we get?
We're not, we're not, you don't know what kind of help you get until you ask me what you want. And what I want is from you. What do you wanna do for outreach for your community, for your board? How do you think you can go, what is, what can you do? And, and we've had someone say, well, we need to do this, and what it was, was we need to go organize this big, huge event down in this place. Invite all these different people, and all of a sudden, we're running a fifty thousand dollar event. And it's like, no, we're not gonna do that.
And that's fine. That's like a dialogue you could have. Maybe this is, uh,
If people wanted to donate their funds for a scholarship or something, that doesn't do much for the board, the ideas community outreach.
Yeah, so
Something. So if you start with ideas, come to us. We can tell you under the parameters
But if, if you want us to, if you wanted to start, okay, uh,
That answers my question. Thank you, sir. Uh, is that a, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've gotten to all of the, uh, okay, questions. So we're gonna move on to committee reports, elections committee. I don't think they had a meeting yet. It's clear to the chair that, uh, do you have anything, Chair?
No, oh, am I still muted?
We can hear you.
No, I have no report.
Okay, thank you. Survey committee, I know the chair is not here. Anybody from the committee wanna report on their meeting?
I'm sorry, he did schedule a meeting, but I, I was not able to attend that. It took me scheduled it.
Okay, um, there was a lot of discussion at the committee, and I believe that, uh, we're gonna meet again likely, uh, early next year. And then they're still working on the, the survey draft, so we'll look forward to that next year. Uh, Neighborhood Plan Committee.
Sure, we did. Oh, it went away. We're okay. No report.
No report. Okay, uh, thank you. We're at the announcements. So our next meeting will be on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. There will be no meeting in December. Uh, the meeting will start at six PM. So the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna adjourn the meeting, uh, and then this, that's such a unfortunate of the meeting that we're going to a, an adjudicatory session. Okay, if there's something else, I'd like to wish everybody, uh, happy holidays, and we'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Bye.